Hand them to the secretary over on my right. We'd also like at this time, if you have any cell phones or electronic devices, to please turn them off or turn them to silent. And if you do have to take a phone call, please step outside in the hallway to take that so it doesn't disrupt anybody. Okay, we will now open the zoning board of adjustment meeting and we'll start with the, I think it's the minutes.
Move to approve the meeting.
Okay. Steve made the motion and Mike seconded, Mike Kwazny seconded it. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to item two.
Seven, the variance request to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from eight feet to five feet two inches for a property located at 6517 Banden Lane. There's an existing single-family dwelling with a two-stall garage. The applicant is proposing to construct an additional 10 and 1/2 feet onto the side of the house to make a three-stall garage. Property's currently zoned low-density residential district, as are the properties to the north, south, and east, and they're all developed with single-family dwellings. Property to the west is golf course and zone general agriculture district. Aerial view showing development that's happening or has happened. Currently, there's a house being constructed on the property to the north. Future land use is low-density neighborhood, and this gives you a general idea in the city northwest of the intersection of Sheridan Lake Road and Dunsborough Road. Site plan of the current house on the property, when it was originally constructed, there's a 20-foot easement on the south side of the property, which means they had to have a larger setback on that side of the house, but they were still able to get a single-family dwelling with a two-stall garage with a 15-foot side yard setback on that north side. Here we have a site plan showing the proposed addition, which would be decreasing the setback below eight feet, which is the minimum required, to five feet two inches. Reasonable use of the land exists because there is a single-family dwelling with a two-stall garage located on the property. Elevations of the proposed addition. It is one story from the front of the street and a walkout in the back. And here we have a view of the property. This was taken a few weeks ago. You can see over here the construction that's happening on that north side, and then on this side here is where that 20-foot easement is. Looking up the street to north, to the south. You can see that there are a lot of, you know, one of the things the applicant has indicated that there are a lot of single-family dwellings with three-stall garages and four-stall garages, and this is the only one with a two-stall garage, but that's not justification to allow a third stall because everyone else has it. This is looking at that property line with the adjacent neighbor. We did receive a letter in opposition from the neighbor who is currently constructing a dwelling on the adjacent property to the north stating that the reason they chose to build in this area was the large side yard setbacks. The applicant has provided, as part of the application, numerous letters from other neighbors in the neighborhood in support of the proposed reduction, but you can see this is the one that is affected by the reduction in side yard setback. With that, there was a vacation of utility and minor drainage easement along that north lot line, which was approved for where this addition would encroach into the easement. And like I said, reasonable use of the land exists with what is currently developed on the property. Staff is recommending that the variance request be denied. There are speaker request forms. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't see any at this time. Let's start with the speaker request form. Janelle, did you want to speak? Okay, Mark and Kelly.
Kelly. Good morning. I'm Kelly Jobman. This is my husband, Mark Jobman. Thank you so much for giving us your time this morning. We were the very first home that was constructed on Banden Lane. We did not build the home, but the home was the first one on Banden Lane. And since then, Banden Lane has grown into a fabulous community of wonderful families and friends, and it has just been, it's been, we are a treat. We are so blessed with where we live. It's been amazing. But also, our needs have changed as well as we have continued to grow as a family and as we have continued to look around as our neighborhood has grown and all the other homes, you know, they're, they're so much more able to utilize their properties because of the way they are. And so, in looking around, you know, it's our goal ultimately to maximize the functionality of our lot that we have and bring it up to equitable use compared with all those other lots in our area. So, we thank you for your time. We're very excited about this opportunity, and I'm going to pass it on to Mark.
Sure. Thank you, Mark Jobman. Appreciate your time this morning. I was just recently serving on the same board, so I very much appreciate the time to present to you here. Having served on the board, I do understand the very importance of receiving neighborhood support for our projects. That's why Kelly and I, we have met with all of our neighbors that currently do live on Banden Lane cul-de-sac here with us, and we've seen there's full support on this. That is evident based on the petition that was one of the exhibits within your package there, along with several neighbors have sent in letters of support for us and this project as well. The addition that we're looking at, as Fletcher mentioned, would be to the north side of our current home. The west view that we all buy houses on Banden Lane for that looks over Red Rock Golf Course and the beautiful Black Hills, it will not be impacted all, will not be impacted by this develop, or by this addition that we have. The best news that we have is that this addition would, even with this addition, there would still be nearly 35 feet between our home and the home directly to the north of us, which is very comparable to every other single home on Banden Lane. So, I greatly appreciate your time. You're looking at this application with us. I do have Janelle Fisk here with, she's our civil engineer. She has assisted us along the way. She has some exhibits that she'd like to bring up with you as well and kind of talk to you a little bit more about the technical aspects. Kelly and I will be here for questions, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, Janelle.
I'm Janelle Fink with Fisk Land Surveying, and I'm here with Mark and Kelly Jobman. We've worked with Mark on several projects, and it's been a pleasure to work with him on a project that relates to his home. I'd like to visit with you today a little bit about the criteria and the requirements on the variance. Mark and Kelly kind of explained personally where they're at, and I want to talk about the more technical details. There are five criteria that you're given as a board that you can look at, that you may consider. You don't have to, we don't have to meet all the criteria. In fact, the ordinance doesn't even say we have to meet any of the criteria, but there are those that, five items that we can look at. The first one is special circumstances or condition. Two is non-excluded land use. Three's reasonable use. Four is minimum adjustment. Five is not injurious or detrimental. I want to start with the first one, which is special circumstances or condition. I think we have very clear special conditions in this instance here. You're looking at a copy of the site plan. Shows the location of the house. Highlighted in yellow is that 20-foot utility easement, and unfortunately, in this instance, that 20-foot easement is offset 15 feet from the property line. It was a pre-existing easement that existed before this development came into being. There's some considerable utility clusters there, so it's, you know, we have utilities that are probably located in that area. And that area that you're looking at, the restriction amounts to 35 feet of restriction across that south lot line because of the placement of that easement. That equates to almost 5,000 square feet that's excluded from use and represents 28% of the total lot area of that lot. In addition, the topography is pretty severe on the lot. Most of these lots are perched where they look over the golf course. There's over 22 feet of drop from the northeast corner to the northwest corner. So, this is not a situation of saying, "We can just put that garage somewhere else." There's too much relief on the land to place the garage elsewhere. So, I think we have clear special circumstances and condition. And I also wanted to point out, this is a copy of the actual plat document for this area for these lots. This utility easement is highlighted in orange. There are no other lots in this particular subdivision that have that same 20-foot utility easement that run through their lots. There are a couple on the east above the golf course that have used easements, but their easements are smaller and they coincide with the lot lines, so they're not, they're not doubling up in terms of space or area. So, clearly, this is a unique or an individual circumstance. The second criteria is not an excluded use. That's pretty easy. Garage is not an excluded use in this district. And then we get to number three, which is reasonable use. Reasonable use, I think, kind of trips most of us up a little bit because it's very subjective. What's reasonable to me is probably different than what's reasonable to you. And if a thought entered your mind when you looked at this over the past few weeks that this has been on the agenda and say, "How does two-car garage not represent reasonable use?", I'm pretty sure that your thoughts had company. However, I think we need to take a little bit closer look. So, when I started thinking about reasonable, I said, "Well, what's the definition of reasonable?" I looked in the zoning ordinance. They don't even define what reasonable is. I looked through all of the ordinances in Rapid City, and I didn't see a definition of reasonable anywhere. So, I went to Blacks Law. We have a copy in our office. And Blacks Law says that reasonable is fair, proper, just, moderate, this is my favorite, suitable under the circumstances. It's also synonymous with rational, honest, equitable, fair, suitable, moderate, and tolerable. So, I'd like you to keep that definition in mind as we go and talk about, a little bit more about reasonable use. This is that same area again that Mark and Kelly live in. There are lots kind of highlighted in blue there. All the, there are 34 lots in their particular area. Everything else is surrounded by golf course. All 34, or all these lots are accounted for with either a number that you're going to see or a V. There are four vacant lots. That means they're not built on. All the rest of the lots are occupied and have a number, and there are 34 lots there. Of the 34 homes in this neighborhood, 24 homes have a three-stall garage. That is over 70% of the homes in their area have a three-stall garage. There are eight four-stall garages. That represents over 23% of the residences in this area. Only two, including Mark and Kelly, have a two-stall garage. One is the smallest lot in the area. The other one is Mark and Kelly's with this particular easement. The two garages represent only 5%. So, when you're talking about reasonable under the circumstances, 95% of the homes in their area and neighborhood have a three-stall garage or greater in this instance. So, I'm not asking you to say, "Does this apply in an industrial district, in a commercial district, in a tiny home district, in a historic district?", but in this circumstance, 95% have the three-stall or greater garage. The next criteria is, is it a minimum adjustment necessary? For a three-stall garage, yes, this is the minimum adjustment that's necessary in order for that, to put that in. I know you've seen in your packet, there was a kind of a, I'll call it a petition. Mark and Kelly spent time talking to, excuse me, talking to their neighbors and had several that were immediately adjacent to them that signed. I would like to point out where those people live because sometimes a name and an address doesn't mean anything to you. These are the people that signed the petition. Mark and Kelly's house is right here. So, they've established those relationships with their neighbors, and they have the support. If you've read those letters, some of them encouraged this, said it's the right use for these people. It's the right use for their neighborhood, and they fully support that. So, I think that that says a lot. Fletcher touched on the fact that we actually submitted and received vacation of utility and drainage easement for the area that's proposed. So, that went through the review process. The utility companies consented, and the city accepted the vacation of that easement. There were no objections from fire department or police department in regard to safety or health issues there. When you talk about open space and things like that, the garage they're proposing is going to be set back 27 feet from the street. In this zoning district with this street classification, you can put a 20-foot setback. So, you could actually have the garage at 20 feet. They're proposing to set it back or offset it or de-emphasize the garage by placing it at 27 feet. Also, we maintain generous open space and a light and air condition that is also mentioned in the staff report. Okay. This is an aerial photo. Shows up a little bit. I've kind of highlighted the perimeter of the area that we're talking about, and again, Mark and Kelly's house is right here. There is numerous open space in this area. It is surrounded by golf course, and as Mark indicated, there's still a 35-foot separation between them and the neighbor even with the addition. And it doesn't negatively impact the neighbor to the next door in terms of their view of use because everything that they're looking at is out the west end of their property. I'd also like to point out, this is a photograph of the home that's being constructed next door with a three-stall garage prominently in front. And one of the things that I think is interesting with this photo is the sun is setting in the west, and you can see the bank of windows out the back. That's where the view is. That's where everybody does their living, is out the west side, and they're, they're looking at the golf course. This addition of Mark and Kelly's does not impact that or doesn't create any adverse effect for their neighbors. So, that kind of takes us through the criteria requirements, and when it comes, or, excuse me, the criteria, and when it comes to requirements, we have to establish it's not contrary to public interest. A garage is not contrary to public interest, and I think we've demonstrated where we're able to maintain adequate separation, adequate airspace, offset the garage for that. Second requirement is special conditions and related to hardship, and there were obviously special conditions in this area that we talked about for the lot with the easement and the topography. And the hardship is not being able to use their property in the same manner. And then when we talk about spirit of title and substantial justice, allowing Mark and Kelly the same use, opportunity, and enjoyment of their property as their neighbors, I think qualifies and meets that criteria. So, I think when you look at this closer and you look at the circumstances of this request, I believe that the Jobmans meet not only the criteria but also the requirements. And I did want to mention, if you didn't notice in your packet, I think Gerald left you an email. He's not able to be here today, but his indication was that he did support the request, and I hope you will follow suit, and I hope that we've provided enough reason for you to support this variance request. If you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Okay, any comments? Mike.
Fletcher, can you put up that picture of the house? There was where they want to build the garage, and it showed the other level was a little higher. I just wanted to see that again. Yeah, that's the one. Is that going to cause, now, it looks like that's up about five feet or so, four feet above? Will that cause any problems? I don't foresee any drainage, but that's going to almost go over. The lot line is where that box is right there.
I'll defer to Ted Johnson whether there are drainage issues.
Thank you. I don't believe there is, based on the previous vacation and the drainage analysis that was submitted with that. It should not adversely affect the drainage. I believe the construction is the house to the, to the adjacent house, so the drainage on that would run towards this, but based on the analysis we were provided, this addition should not adversely affect addition, existing conditions.
Well, I would probably support the addition only because of the area and the three-stall garages, and it doesn't look to me like it's going to adversely change that, so.
Thank you, Mike. Rachel.
Just so I understand, we're talking about the edge of this garage, the proposed garage, will be five foot two inches from the lot line? And so, when you say that there's going to be a 35-foot space, the other 30 feet comes from your neighbor. Is that correct? Okay. And I think calling, excuse me, the lack of a third stall garage hardship is a little bit stretching the word. Just had to put that out there. But it doesn't appear to impact safety or health or anything as long as the fire department cleared it. I don't see any reason why to oppose it.
Thank you, Rachel. Steve.
I agree with what Rachel just said, and I, I'm looking at it, too, and because of the level difference that they're, if they build it over, I'm not seeing really where it's going to adversely affect the person building it next to them because there is plenty of a distance between the two homes, and I think that level makes it. So, I'm going to move that we actually approve this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vicki.
So, just as a reminder, there is a separation today of 29 feet. The applicant, or the property owner to the north, has a setback of eight foot for one story or 12 foot for two-story. They would have the right to come in and get a building permit and add on to their property as well. So, the thing that, the distance we should be looking at is what would be that maximum distance if the property to the north was also built out? So, that does reduce that number significantly. To the motion maker, if I could make a friendly amendment, we need to cite the criteria for which we're granting the variance, and in listening to the discussion today, what I'm hearing is that it's a use that's otherwise allowed in the district, that there is a special circumstance created by the 20-foot wide easement located on the south side of the property, and that based on the development in the neighborhood, you believe that this is reasonable use of the property. And if the motion maker agrees, you could add that to your motion.
Mike, you agree? Okay. I'm not going to repeat out. That was a little long, but, sorry, Vicki. Okay, I think everybody understands the motion on the floor. I see Kurt, he wanted to speak also.
Yeah, it looks to me like, you know, you guys knew there was a 20-foot utility easement there, and now we're trying to pack some more stuff into the area that you can do. You knew that there was a 20-foot easement there when you bought the place, and now you want to build a bigger garage just because everybody else has one. You know, I voted last meeting against a bunch of garages being built on a lot that was too small for, for the requirements. I don't think I'll be voting for this one.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Anybody else want to discuss this? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. Steve made the motion, and Mike Kwazny seconded it, to approve with the discussion about special circumstances and whatever else. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes with Kurt voting no. Okay, anything else for the zoning board, Vicki? Okay, I'll take a motion to close. Okay, Steve made the motion and Mike seconded it, Mike Kwazny, to end the zoning board of adjustment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will now go on to the planning commission. Well, let's see. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following item, and that is item number seven, UR 015. So, see, also mentioned that the planning commission's action on that one item are final unless the party appeals to the Rapid City Council, and all appeals must be submitted to the community planning office by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following by action. Are there any items one through eight that staff would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes, item number two, please.
Okay. Are there any items one through eight that the planning commissioners would like to remove? Are there any items from the audience that the audience would like to have removed for consideration? Okay. Do I have a second for that?
I'll say.
Okay. Kim seconded that motion. Motion is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number two. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Or at item number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number two is a preliminary subdivision plan for a residential development that's located east of Mount Rushmore Road and south of Katron Boulevard. This has been on your agenda for some time now, and the applicant is requesting this item be continued to your September 7th planning commission meeting to continue discussions with staff about the extension of utilities in order to serve the development, and that would be our recommendation.
Steve made a motion, and John seconded it, to approve the continuation to September 7th for item number two. Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear that.
Go ahead, John. Repeat your motion. Are you a question?
I think we've continued it about four times now. This is not a plat, and by state law, you can only have a plat item on, an agenda without action unless a waiver is signed. This is a plan, so it doesn't meet that criteria. In the past, if we saw that the applicant was not working towards solution, we would bring you a recommendation to deny it, to just get it off the agenda, but in this case, there is ongoing discussions. This is a pretty extensive requirement for utilities and street construction in order to serve this, and so with that, and with knowing that the applicant is moving forward, we're on board with allowing them the additional time they need to continue those discussions.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, I'll take a motion, or, I mean, a vote, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are now at the regular items, and we'll start with item number nine.
Good morning. Sarah Hansel, Division of Long Range Planning.
Good morning, Sarah Hansel, Division of Long Range Planning. Item number nine is a application to deannex approximately 19 and a half acres from the Rapid City Limits. The property is located on the north side of town. This is west of Haynes Avenue and north of the I-90 interchange. You can see the property located here. This property consists of two different portions. There's an 11-acre portion that is unplatted, and then eight-and-a-half-acre portion that is platted into 12 lots. And this property is accessed from Disk Drive, which then turns into Mount Carmel, which is a street that is maintained by the city street department. Let's take you through some other photos here. Here's an aerial photograph showing that the unplatted property is developed with a single-family home. The platted property currently does not have any structural development on it. The property is zoned park-forest. And the future land use shows this area as being appropriate for forest conservation uses. Here's some site photographs. This is Mount Carmel Drive, looking south towards the interstate. Here, we're still on Mount Carmel, looking north. Here, looking east into the adjacent mobile home park development. And then looking west up towards the drive, which accesses the property that's proposed to deannex. Here we are, a little further up along the drive, looking out over to the development immediately adjacent. The Kohl's, the commercial development that includes the Kohl Shopping Center is about a half-mile from this area. And then lastly, here, the single-family home that's developed on the property. The city established a policy for looking at deannexation requests in the last few years, as we've seen more and more of these applications coming through. So the staff report outlines the 17 criteria that we're to look at. In this case, there's about half of them that do not support deannexation of this property. Some of the main reasons for that are that it is included within the city's urban services boundary. Though this property is not currently served by city utilities, it could be served by them if that were to be prompted by development in the future. Also, looking further west, there are other platted properties adjacent to this property. If this property were to deannex, that would render those properties non-contiguous, and then they would be ineligible to annex in the future. We don't think that that's a good, that does not support deannexation of this property. It's also not used primarily for agricultural purposes. There is, you know, a family that lives there, and they utilize city services, they utilize the city's street network, and we think it's important that this property remain within the city limits. Let's see if there's another highlight here. So for those reasons, staff is not recommending that this deannexation request be approved. I believe the property applicant is here and has submitted a speaker request form as well. So excluding this property does not create an irregular boundary, which is one of the criteria that we look at. It's not located in the donut hole, which was discussed extensively during the last deannexation request. However, we do think it's really important that making it impossible for the properties to the west to be able to annex into the future is a really important consideration for this particular application. So without, the staff does not recommend approving this, but I am available for any questions if you have any.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Okay, Jim Tice.
Good morning, and thank you very much for letting me address you. First of all, the property, when it was owned by the previous owner, they are the ones who requested that property to be annexed in the first place. They had plans of, since they owned the mobile home court directly across Mount Carmel to the east, they had plans of putting numerous mobile homes up in this property. And I actually led the fight of the neighborhood against intensive development of that property. And that, at that time, was when the commission decided to zone it as park-forest, to reduce that chance of more intensive development. Soil conditions on their ridge do not lend it to more intensive development, anyway. From the time that my now-deceased uncle and I purchased this property from the previous owner, from that time on, we never had any plans to subdivide the property, to do any development on it. That's why nothing has changed on the property, other than my uncle's house being built there in '91. Now we're at a point, as, I don't know if you have copies of the letter that I also had submitted with this, and it really has nothing to do, I guess, with your decision. I'm just asking this for my wife and I, because we're both retired, and, you know, who knows how many more years that we'll be on this earth. But we still have no plans of subdividing, selling off the property. But the taxes alone are tending to eat us up, since we're both retired. And since the city initiated the stormwater runoff tax, that is determined by the square footage of the property, we have to pay over $600 a year, just for taxes for water runoff. I don't know what else I could do, other than ask you to please reconsider the recommendation to not deannex it. And I guess I always looked at it, that also, when I was leading the neighborhood fight, like I said, against development of the property, is that when you use Mount Carmel as a line to divide the city from the county, that's a straight line, right up Mount Rushmore, or right up Mount Carmel. So I guess, in my opinion, it would, it would make that line more defined, instead of this big jog that's our property. So I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Comments from the commission? Where'd Fletcher go? Oh, Sarah, that's right. I'm sorry, Sarah. That was yours. He wants to see the picture of the city limits?
The city limits are shown in the yellow line, so this property forms the city limits in this area. So to the south, along the I-90 corridor here, and then up along Bunker Drive. And then the city limit jogs back over here, and then continues on this way.
Okay, John? Okay. Okay. I'll go to Mike Kozni.
Well, I can see the reasoning for Jim to want this to be deannexed. I don't know that, I know that we're developing out in that area, further to the north of him. And although it doesn't create a donut hole now, I think it will create a donut hole. I'm not a big fan of these donut holes. It is a prestigious area. I mean, I like the hills, I like what they have there. I have concerns about the water drainage. I've had that from the time the city put that in, and I think there's a lot of people that have been bothered by that. But I, the donut hole, I don't know that we need to start developing donut holes all over in the city, so. I probably will not, I will try to keep it annexed into the city, only because of the development to the north.
Thank you, Mike. Kurt?
So I understand the property owner doesn't have any city services, right?
There's no city water or sewer on the property.
Where is city water and sewer at? Is it on Mount Carmel, or?
Madam Chair, we should probably go to the city engineer.
That probably would be a good idea. Hold off just a second, Jim. Ted?
Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't quite prepared for that. I hadn't pulled up Rapid Map to see where the services are.
And I do have some notes in my staff report as well, actually.
Quick, if you'll bear with me. Turn on that layer.
The nearest public water main I have in my staff report is 3,400 feet north of the property, and the nearest public sewer main is 1,350 feet southeast.
Okay.
And that's in the Disk Drive, Howard Street right-of-way.
Okay.
That'd be correct.
That'd be, okay, Ted agrees. I'm sure you've, well, you got some of that information?
Services are ways to the east yet. They are. Long Bunker Drive, north and south in areas, but that's about as far west as they go.
Okay, thanks, Ted.
So where do, where do the adjacent properties get their service? It looks like, you know, that mobile home park ought to have water and sewer.
Go ahead, Ted.
I believe that does, but I mean, it's all private. It doesn't show up on my map. So I believe that's private services that are connected to city utilities to the east.
Okay. Is there plans to get water and sewer up there?
There are nothing that I'm aware of, at this point, to extend beyond where it's at now, to the west.
Okay, and then just one further question. So if he's, if this is deannexed, the drainage fees go away?
There would be about $600 in drainage fees that would not be assessed if they were to be in the county.
Okay. All right. I'm also not in favor of, you know, deannexing. That's going to create a donut hole in the future. Looking at, you know, what's, excuse me, looking at what's around, around there, I can see the city, you know, eventually annexing those areas, and then here we, here we would have this hole in the middle. So I probably won't be voting in favor of this.
Okay, thanks, Kurt. I don't see any other lights. I guess I would like to just, also, you know, discuss this a little bit. I think the area that you have up there, Jim, is gorgeous. I mean, it's really a pretty view. You've got, you can see that, I've been up on top up there, and you can see a long way. I think in the future, this area will be developed. Might not be you, but maybe somebody in the future will do that. It's been in the city for 30 years. That's a long time. And I hate to see us deannex property because of taxes. I know that's, that's hard on you. It's hard on everybody when they have to pay those taxes. But to me, that's not a good reason necessarily to deannex, and I think that's your main reason. So I wouldn't be voting for this also, but I'll listen to anybody else that might want to have a discussion, or if somebody want to make a motion. Okay. Rachel made a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for deannexation. Do I hear a second? Seconded by John. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And I appreciate your comments, Jim, but the motion is to deny your request.
Understood, and thank you. And I would like to, for your, for your future reference on the utilities, when this, when the previous owner had planned on doing this development in that property, I did my own investigation to find out what we were talking about, about utilities, because what they wanted to do was, was have all of the neighbors contribute to bringing a new water main up through this same piece of property to serve all of the mobile homes that they were going to put up there. And they said, we could tie onto it. Well, what I found out was, from the city, was that the closest main that would be large enough to serve these additional homes was by the, and I, I'm sorry, I can't, I never can remember the name, but the big white hotel that's down there across the road from Kohl's. But that was the closest main. And like you said, that the water in that mobile home court, that's private. And they said that in order to bring city water up onto the ridge, that they'd have to put, they'd have to extend a large enough main to, first of all, down to the bottom of, or down to Mount Carmel. And then they'd have to put a list station there, in order to be able to pump the water up the ridge, and then put a reservoir up at the level where we ended up drilling the new well, which is above where I used to live, at 1248 Pine Cone Lane, which is adjacent to this property, to the southeast corner of it. And it was going to cost us, I don't know, something like $180,000 to get, for our share of that. And then none of the mains or the service lines serving any of the homes that are in Laurel Heights would have, would have met the city criteria for mains and service lines, so that all would have been replaced. None of the homes up there in Laurel Heights have water meters. They would have, have been put in there also. So we decided it was cheaper to drill a new well.
Gotcha. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Okay, we're at item number 10.
Item number 10 is a major amendment to a planned development to expand a mixed-use development to include additional commercial uses. You'll notice the title used to say including, or it says, including a microbrewery with on-sale. That is not the intent of this application. It is to secure the parking for the uses. In the future, a major amendment will be submitted for the on-sale use and the microbrewery use when a tenant is secured. This is phase two of the Landstrom's Building redevelopment. We saw phase one included redevelopment to include limited-service restaurant with outdoor seating, a coffee shop with a drive-thru, retail offices and storage. Phase two is construction of additional parking and office, retail, storage, and a future microbrewery. The applicant is requesting two exceptions, one to reduce the parking from 175 parking spaces to 117, and a second exception to waive the required parking islands from two to zero. And let's get you looking at, oh, sorry, wrong presentation. The property is located west Rapid Street, just south of Omaha. On the park, it's own general commercial district. Properties to the west, east, and south as well. And to the north, it's flood hazard district. Currently, building located on the property is the old Landstrom's Gold Creations. The applicant is proposing, there's currently construction going on in this area, as well as proposed parking in this area. You can see the property to the north is undeveloped, heavily treed, and we have West Main Street to the south and the railroad. Future land use shows the area suitable for mixed-use commercial, and you'll notice to the north, it's Parks and Greenway. And West Main Street, Omaha, and Jackson Boulevard are identified as arterial streets on the city's major street plan. And this is kind of in that gap area between two major commercial centers, Bacon Park and the downtown. Here we have proposed development as this phase, with the increase in uses. There's going to be additional parking created on the west side of the property, and fixed on the east side of the property. Rapid Street is also currently under construction, which we'll be removing some of the on-street parking in the future. But the applicant has indicated that the mix of uses in the building, including offices and the restaurants, they'll have varying and differing hours, peak hours and hours of operation, and that the reduction in parking should not have a negative impact on what they're proposing to do. Landscape plan along this north lot line, landscaping was previously reduced because there's an easement, which doesn't allow for the trees and shrubs, which would be, which you'd regularly see along a street right-of-way, which would help provide the buffer. In addition, the parking island request from two to zero, it's allowing the applicant to provide additional onsite parking and removing obstacles from snow removal as well. But we do have some bumpouts in areas and landscaping around the building, which will provide the aesthetics which are intended. Elevation showing the building and signage, floor plans of the multi-levels. And here's looking from the west into the property, and current construction going on on the building, utilities to the south or west of the parking lot. This is looking from the north toward, to the south, across that park area, which is own flood hazard district, showing you that there is a lot of vegetation in the area, which provides the aesthetics. Looking towards West Main Street. Uh, looking towards West Main Street. I think this is looking towards Omaha Street to the north and west. And Omaha Street and across at the park and, and, uh, the, the hill in the background. And out again to the, to the north. And this is, uh, looking at some of the construction going on in the area, to the streets as well as the building. And then we do have, uh, another little commercial area that's east of this property, uh, showing you the redevelopment that has happened there as well. Uh, so, in order to secure the uses and reducing the parking, uh, the exception to reduce the parking from a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and seventeen, staff's recommending to approve based on the applicant's operations plan and their, uh, variety of uses and different, different peak hours, and we're recommending to approve the exception to waive the parking island requirement from two to zero. Uh, and, just so you know, the stipulation is that future on-sale liquor use or the microbrewery will require a major amendment which will come back before the planning commission for review.
Okay, thank you Fletcher, comments from the commission? Kim?
The applicant's consultant is here, if you have any questions.
Good morning, I'm Janelle with Fiscal Land Surveying, and we are working with ACV Two Architecture, who is the, um, prime on this project. I'm sorry, I, I don't think your speaker was on, so can you ask the question again?
I was just wondering if you had any justification for the reduced of the parking? If the various tenants had a parking count requirements?
Um, yes, when, when we submitted the, uh, initial development for phase one, we identified the total general uses in, within the building, which were office, uh, office, general commercial, the, um, drive-through, um, there was some retail and then a restaurant, then the microbrewery. Based on the square footage of those proposed uses, that's how we came up with the parking calculation. And based on the fact that it's a mixed-use building, so when you have office and retail that are open more typically eight to five, you know, Monday through Friday, or retail on a Saturday, and then your restaurants and your brewery have more evening hours, that tends to offset. Some of the parking requirement was generated also by, um, uh, outdoor seating area, which is seasonal and cannot be used year-round, and then the property being located between, um, uh, near the bike path, we're anticipating that there will be some bike and foot traffic as well, and so kinda just based on the, the mixed uses, we felt that it was appropriate, um, to, uh, reduce the parking and we maximized the parking that was available. And, uh, we also compared the use to the previous use as a gold manufacturer, when they had roughly, I wanna say at the peak, they had almost three hundred employees, um, working in shifts, and we would not have, we're not anticipating anywhere near that, and so based on the previous use and the projected uses, um, and the combination thereof, we felt that, uh, it was a reasonable reduction, and, uh, I think staff felt that way as well.
Okay, anything further Kim? Thank you, um, Rachel?
Actually, I have a question for you Janelle, um, if you don't mind. Uh, do we know, um, if we get rid of those two required to park, you know, islands, uh, landscape islands, do we know how many parking spaces that'll take up?
Um, if we were to add the parking islands back in, typically based on the square footage, I think it usually seems to take up almost two spaces per island in order to meet the square footage that you need and do the landscaping. And Fletcher did point out some of the landscaping in the front, but all around the perimeters of the parking, um, we have that, and we have what we would call nodes, um, a couple of nodes that are, they, they tend to be like kind of a horseshoe thing, but they're not an isolated island, so we have parking nodes and landscaping around the perimeter.
Okay, thank you Janelle.
Okay, Kurt?
I, I know we can't, you know, count parking on public right-of-way, but is parking allowed on Rapid Street?
Today it's not striped as no parking, but we've been notified that when the construction, reconstruction is complete on West Rapid Street, that they're going to post it as no parking.
It will be posted as no parking?
They're going to post it as no parking, even though today it doesn't have that same status.
All right, um, you know, and then looking at, you know, the hours of the businesses, you know, when, when you come up with those parking requirements, it's like everything's open all at once. And, and you indicated Janelle that, that, you know, there'd be staggered hours, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, we anticipate different hours of uses for different buildings. And there's an absence of development around this, so if they don't have enough parking, the only people that get hurt are the tenants here, they're not gonna park somewhere else, this is park area, so. That, so the, I guess, the potential negative impact is borne by the developer. If, for some, some reason you have a, you know, a big booming day and they run out of parking, somebody's gonna go somewhere else to the restaurant or do a different restaurant.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I applaud what the developer is trying to do here, taking an old building that, you know, could be tore down or, you know, and be a waste of a nice, nice building, I think, uh, it's a good use of this property and, and, uh, I'm glad to see somebody take a, a huge risk that this would be successful, and um, I think it'll be a, a great asset to the community.
Thank you.
Ted, did you have some comments?
Thank, just a minor comment, West Rapid Street has been signed, no parking. It's been done for a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you Ted, um, Mike Kozniak?
I generally don't like the reduction of parking, as it's been stated by me before, um, but they will be the ones that suffer, and to Janelle's point there, I think, um, they do not have other businesses around them that will be affected. I have a concern that the, where the power plant is in front, I think that's a, have they been approached, has Black Hills, uh, energy been to maybe put a fence or soften that? Or maybe that's where you can get some green points, um, by putting some landscaping? I can make reference to Mount Rushmore Road area and what they did in that area, um, to make that look a little nicer for the business. Have they been approached?
Janelle?
Actually, Black Hills Power pretty much occupies, with fence and use area, their, their full area. We do provide landscaping on the north side of the substation and the east side of the substation, so we're landscaping around the perimeter. I think that the applicant would like to do some fencing or screening to the south, um, in the future, between that and also the railroad right-of-way. Um, project budget just doesn't permit for that at this time, so we haven't addressed any, any more screening measures to the south or the substation, other than landscaping.
Do, do we know how many green points, or, yeah, I know they've taken away landscaping from the front, and I know that there's a park area there kinda, but is, is there green points, or whatever they, we call those? And maybe that's, Vicky, if we could ask Vicky?
I think Fletcher's looking, but Vicky, did you have a comment?
So are you asking whether this property owner took away landscape points, or whether or not Black Hills took away landscape points?
I thought we took away when they started this, there were some things that they were told they didn't have to put in.
So, when this project came in, looking at it as a revitalization project, knowing that we had an existing building that's going to require a minimum amount of parking, and that they only had so much real estate, there was some consideration on a unique design for landscaping. That landscaping being pushed out to the perimeter, and then you'll see some nodes of landscaping around the, the building itself, and if Fletcher would put that aerial up, that would be great, and I think that would help us with our conversation. And there is a, um, fair amount of landscaping that's being provided adjacent to that outdoor area that you approved in phase one of this project. And as Fletcher is showing, then along the perimeter of the property as well. What we try to do in meeting this compromise is to get the greatest impact possible with the landscaping that is being provided, and what we've found in the past is that if we encourage the streetscaping and then pick an accent point up against the building to really push the landscaping into a grouped area, it has more of an impact than dispersing it, uh, equally throughout the property where it's not as noticed that you've got that landscaping. And so in looking at what they've done in securing the maximum amount of green space they could, and still provide the maximum amount of parking, this seemed to be a pretty good compromise with the consideration that we're trying to revitalize an older building.
Does that help Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, to your point, the, uh, initial, uh, review of this, an exception was granted to reduce the landscaping from sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen points to fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-four points. So that was, uh, an exception that was already granted.
And you're not able to see on this picture, if I could add, it doesn't show up very well, but there are trees located in the landscape plan all along here and in through here, in this area here, they're just not showing up, you're just not seeing them, they're, they're light or faded, as, as there are trees and landscaping in this area here. So, we've kind of rimmed the site.
Okay, thank you, um, Vicky, did you have any further comments?
The one thing I did want to point out is, you will see instances where there are parking reductions being requested in areas where there are similar businesses up and down the street that provide parking lots. And where we feel that by reducing one's parking will push those customers into another parking lot, it's hard for us to support those, cause that's what's gonna happen. If you can park one property over and walk over, you're going to do it. In this case, similar to others you've seen us bring before you, when this is somewhat isolated in nature, even though there isn't street parking available today, if you can't park on this property, you won't stop. And so those that will be penalized because of the lack of parking will be the very people that are using this building, so it doesn't hurt the adjacent properties. And so I just wanted to clarify that difference, because you won't always see staff support such a large reduction in parking.
Okay, thanks Vicky, Rachel?
I don't wanna push this conversation further too much, but I, I, you know, that strikes me, um, Vicky too, that this being so close to the bike path, we might have more people riding their bicycles simply because of parking, which I think is, is great for everyone, if everyone's riding more bicycles, considering the clientele who are gonna be coming here, it's gonna be kind of a younger group. I, I feel like, um, you know, anything we can do to support this project within reason, uh, I would like to see done, because it's, it's gonna be good for the community, it's gonna be good, I mean, we all know why this is gonna be good for us, but I support this, you know, with the staff stipulations.
Thank you Rachel, Steve?
I do too, I, I look at that, and right now, you know, it's been vacant for a long time, you've had grass growing up, and you talk about, you wanna see something blighted, you drove by there for years, it was blighted. So no matter what they do, just putting something in there, I hope that parking lot gets full, I hope they get that kinda business. But I'm just thinking, just what they've done with the money to play into there, and, and it's gonna be better, because you do have some areas that they're talking about, there's gonna be trees and stuff which looks better than that grass growing up through the, the cement currently, so I support this a hundred percent, and I, and I, I support the, and I'm glad the city has worked with them to, to get this project done, so thank you.
Okay, thanks Steve, um, obviously we can, you can tell we're all supportive of this project and, and we're hoping for good things for it, so. I'll, I'll look for a motion on this item. Mike Kozniak made a motion to approve the item with staff stipulations? Do I hear a second? Okay, Rachel made, was the second, uh, no further comments, all those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We are at item number eleven.
Item number eleven is a final planned development overlay that allows gravel parking for a temporary church, file number seventeen PD zero-three-nine. Properties located at six twelve and six twenty, uh, East Boulevard North, its own general commercial district. A church is a permitted use in the general commercial district. What the applicant is proposing is to hold a temporary church on the property between the dates of September tenth, two thousand seventeen, and September sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, so this is a one-time event. Uh, each night between six and nine, services will be held for between fifty and a hundred people, uh, and then in a tent measuring forty feet by forty feet. Uh, currently, the property has a vacant commercial building on the north side and a cellular communications tower on the south side. There is no parking, thus the, uh, exception request for this one-time event to waive the requirement to provide paved parking. You'll notice in the stipulations of approval that if more events are planned in this area or additional development is, happens in the future, parking will be required and paved at that time. Uh, future land use is mixed-use commercial, uh, just north of East North Street, which is identified as a revitalization corridor. Uh, East Boulevard North is a collector's street, East North Street is a principal arterial street. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan showing where parking would be designated with some ADA spaces, uh, porta-potties for temporary use in that area. Um, they're looking at doing, and they're just asking for the exception to waive the parking, of course, the, the tent is temporary. Here's looking at that, uh, building on the north side of the property. Um, one of the things we wanted to revise was if there's any dirt movement in stipulation number six, it states that, um, sorry, uh, "Any site grading or dirt work shall require an erosion and sediment control plan and permit." We would like to revise that to include a grading permit as well. Uh, here we have, uh, the cellular communications tower located on that south side of the property. And this is looking, uh, to the west along North Street and, uh, north along the street, and there is residential, uh, single-family homes in the area. Uh, park across the street to the west. Looking back towards how you'd get to East North Street, and then again, looking into the interior of the property. Uh, so staff's recommendation is to approve with that revised stipulation number six.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve, uh, Steve made the motion and Kim seconded it. Um, I have two speaker request forms, Dan, did you wanna speak?
My name is Dan Link, I'm a member of Vicre Chapel. Our pastor was unable to be here today, so he asked me to come down here to, uh, answer any questions he might have.
Okay, well, uh, Rachel, did you have a question of you?
Um, it's, I, I don't know if it's specifically for him, but I'm concerned a little bit about erosion, um, if we're having fifty to a hundred people on that, and it rains, you know, with the slope there, all of, you know, that sediment is actually gonna wind up in the street. Um, I don't know if that's normally a concern, but do we have anything to address that?
Fletcher, do you have any comments on that, or?
Affirmative, Ted Johnson on that.
All right Ted.
Thank you. The applicant, or representative applicant did submit a site plan where they wanna do some minor grading and servicing, add some gravel and such. do some minor grading and surfacing, add some gravel and such. One of the local contractors, I believe, volunteered, said they'd volunteer to do that work. Part of that is they will need to account for that, provide some tracking, they'll also stipulated in the conditions that if they have any tracking, get any erosion or any dirt onto the street, they'll need to clean it up after every event. So, there are some requirements. We're not expecting them to do a lot of earth moving, other than just minor surfacing. If, like I say, they talked about adding some gravel in some of those places, so it's a little better surface. It is pretty hard ground, has a lot of aggregate in it, some tough grass on it, so I think unless there's a pretty substantial event, I think they'll have that covered. And we do allow people to make a mess, but they have to clean it up, so it's our standard erosion requirement, so they've been notified of that.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that. Okay, Al, Cornell, would you like to make a comment?
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, I want to say it's nice to see so many longtime friends here, former board and city council members that I've served with. I want to thank all of you for your commitment to the city and our community by serving on this commission.
Al, would you just state your name for the record, so?
Sure, Al Cornell, Cornell Refrigeration.
Thank you.
And we own the property immediately north of this area that's being requested for this exception, and all I want to say is, we would support it, we have no opposition to it. And they've been a good neighbor. I've been familiar with that property since nineteen sixty-nine, and as far as erosion, it's never really been a big problem, because there is so much rock on that property and has been added to over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Al, and thanks for the kind words. Okay, any other comments from the commission? Okay, Steve made the motion to approve with the revised stips, and Kim seconded it, so all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're at item number twelve.
Item number twelve is seventeen PD-040, a final plan development to construct a hotel in the general commercial district. Property's Zone General Commercial District with planned developments. You'll recognize all the properties to the, around it are also Zone General Commercial District. Recently approved, planned development for a hotel on that property to the south. It's located on Luna Avenue, just on the west side of Rushmore Crossing. Currently, the property's void of any structural development, and Pizza Ranch is located just to the north, to give you an idea. Future land use is mixed-use commercial, and I believe Rushmore Crossing is a regional activity center. Luna Avenue is identified as a collector's street on the city's major street plan. The applicant is proposing to construct a four-story, one-hundred-and-twenty-one-room hotel. The one exception they're requesting is to allow a height of fifty-two and a half feet in lieu of the maximum height of forty-five feet. That is for a parapet on the top of the building, which is structural, or not structural, but is not structural, it's part of the parapet, the facade of the building, and it's a thirty-foot section. We also granted the same, similar exception for the property to the south for the same reason that it was just for a parapet at the top of the building. Landscape plan, here we see, you can see there's a future Phase Two proposed. The applicant has indicated they're not, they don't have anyone in mind for this future Phase Two, however, they are showing it. One of the stipulations of approval is that if it does trigger, if the combined uses trigger a traffic impact study, that a major amendment to the planned development would be required before they could construct that next Phase Two. Here we have elevation of the building, and here you can see from the backside what that parapet looks like, and from the front, what that parapet looks like. Signage proposed for the property, and here we're looking in towards, to the property, looking to the east. Development that's happening for that hotel, which is located on the property to the south, the Pizza Ranch to the north, and you can see Sam's Club, looking north along Luna Avenue. You can see there's, there isn't any development on the west side of the street, looking up towards Eglin Street, and looking south on Eglin Street towards Anamosa Street. And looking at the backside, you can see the backside of Walmart, which is located on the cross street. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
We'll approve the stipulation.
Okay, Steve made the motion to approve with the stipulations, and then seconded by Mike. Okay, do I have any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are at item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen is seventeen RZ-024, rezoning request from Park Forest District to Low Density Residential District. The applicant is requesting that the item be continued to the August twenty-fourth meeting. They've also submitted a vacation of right-of-way request, seventeen VR-005, so they're going to continue to work with staff on some information we need for the rezoning, as well as working with us and bringing forward those two applications at the same time. So, staff's recommending that the rezone be continued to the August twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion? Steve made the motion to continue to August twenty-fourth? Seconded by Mike Kozni. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have any other items? Steve, did you want to make a comment?
I have a question. You know the disc golf course off of Omaha Street, I golf there every year, I drive my car, have my disc in the back, and I go there and play, and this year, for some reason, it's not there anymore, they got all ripped up, the things are still up, and it's been that way all summer. I keep driving by, hoping I'd be able to get on my car and go throw for twenty minutes and get back in my car. Could you kind of give me an update on that?
Steve, if you would allow us, we could visit with Jeff Bigler in the Parks Department and see what the current plan is and the long-range plan is, and see if that's going to be reinstated or if it's been removed permanently, but I could certainly get that information to you.
Yeah, I just can't see that happening to a regular golf place, be gone all summer, boy, they'd be up in arms, and there'd be a revolt. I'm ready to revolt.
We'll get some information for you, Steve.
Okay, Vicky, is there any discussion items or staff items?
Just one more thing, seriously, I want to thank all of you for being here today. It's difficult to get quorum certain times of the year, and this week is one of those weeks, believe it or not. There is an email that's typically sent out, asking if you're going to be able to attend this meeting. If you could please respond, otherwise, we sit in limbo wanting to know whether or not we do have quorum, and there are times when we've actually had to cancel the meeting because of lack of quorum. So, it would be very helpful if you get that request, and then you respond back and let us know if you can be here. Thank you.
So noted. Okay, any items that planning commission members, other than Steve, want to say? Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. All right, Rachel made the motion. Seconded by Mike? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Were adjourned. Thank you, everyone.